Mute this guy from the conversation here because what I would suggest for the folks that are playing from home, they could just handle some introductions amongst the three of them that are on the phone without having to hear us all gibber jabber in here.
I think we can mute it.
Difficult.
And then they'll be able to talk to each other, right?
Yes. That is my.
We qualify for more than one.
Okay, but you can't use yourself.
All right, so folks on the phone, we are going to mute you so that you can talk to one another. I'm sorry, I'm going to mute us so that you can talk to one another and do introductions while we do it here.
All right, I'm thinking.
All right, thanks. We encourage you, I encourage you to talk to people you don't already know have these characteristics.
Also, let me get you on.
You do? Okay. Bingo.
All right.
Let's go.
It risks, there is a lot of.
Is that a bingo? Raise your hands.
I wasn't very long ago.
Okay.
Okay, unmute.
If.
Yep.
If your hand is up in 30 seconds, tell us something about somebody that we don't know that's on your bingo card.
David has visited China.
I knew that.
I knew that.
David has visited China.
Don, did you have bingo?
Did I have a bingo? Yes, I did.
So tell us something about somebody in the room.
Amy hates cold water.
You're being rude. Sorry. Going around, who else? George?
Don has served in the legislature and he didn't, he said something nasty about, um.
It's about the same as eating lunch.
I've done that. Amy.
Dan attended school in the district in which he now serves.
Yay. I knew there was somebody in the room who did that. Kim?
Heather is a vegetarian.
Michelle?
Did I get rounded up? Colleen lives on a dirt road.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I hope this gave you a chance to talk to people you haven't spoken with before and to get to know a little something about them as you begin your work together as a board.
Awesome.
On time, right?
Can we say who's on the phone, just so everybody in the room knows?
Yeah, so for folks that know on the phone, we've got Christina, Judy, and Kevin, unless there's anybody else that has joined the call.
Sure, were there any right answers?
Okay.
Well, I, I'm not sure if there, if all of the questions had somebody in the room who could say yes. That I am not sure of. But as far as right answers, if you've got five in a row, that's a right answer.
Five different people.
No, no, it didn't have to be all. Can I take one more minute of this well-reminded introduction section just to have people introduce themselves, or do you want to do that?
No, no, go right ahead.
Okay, so I really am remiss because we should have started with, let's all introduce ourselves. We'll start with Neil.
That'll teach me to hand links over to you. I am Neil Odell. I am a board member in Norwich and also the board chair then in Dresden. We are an interstate school district with Hanover, New Hampshire.
And president.
And president of the V S B A.
Sue Seglowski, I'm the new executive director of the V S B A. I've been working here as the director of legal and policy services prior to that and also have served as a school board member for many years.
With a family member.
And has eaten insects as well.
I've eaten insects as well, yes.
That's what happens when your parents are pets.
Dan MacArthur, I, I, I'm the vice chair of the Marlborough School Board where I went to school, my children went to school, and my grandchildren now go to that school. And I'm the regional representative from Windham region.
I'm Michelle Braun. I have been on the Montpelier School Board for several years and now the Montpelier Rossbury School Board and a new Washington Orange rep.
I am Kim Gleason and I am the vice chair of Essex Westburg School District Board and I've been on the V S B A board for it, most recently serving as treasurer.
And also representing.
Oh, representing Chittenden.
And.
And Grand Isle. Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. Sorry, thank you.
But you're excused because you have only for one year, right?
Right. I was moving, fast forwarding to, no, not at all. Terribly missed, thank you, Jim.
I'm Colleen McKinnon. I'm from Heinsberg and I've been on the Chittenden South Supervisory Union Board, which is now Champlain Valley School District. And I'm representing Champlain Val, Chittenden, Chittenden, Grand Isle, filling in for Diane for a one-year term.
I'm Amy McMullin. I'm from Windsor and I am the chair of the Mount Ascotney School District, which is Windsor and West Windsor. And I'm chair of the Windsor Southeast Supervisory District and I'm Windsor representative.
Mark Love, just joined the board. I've been seven years the chair of Peachum School Board, which is part of the C C S U, which has gotten to be a big group now with Act 46. And I guess we have Kingdom East and we go all the way down to Rivendell at this point if we accept the new districts for our representation. So we've got a big geographic area with the V S B A new regional.
That won't actually take effect until next fiscal year. It was just voted on last week.
It's just an F Y I's.
Yeah.
George Gondav, it's my second year as a board member for Wells Springs, which is one of the legs of Greater Rutland County and Rutland representative.
Hi, I'm Miss Russell. I'm serving my second term as a school board director for Hartford School District. I'm the new Windsor representative and I do a lot of work with Chilwell as my own royal business, which is true.
Hi, I'm Heather Gagne. I chair the Caledonia Cooperative School District Board, which is a pre-K through eight Waterford, Walden, and Barnet within C C S U, so representing Caledonia and Southern Essex for V S B A.
I'm David Chandler. I'm from the Bennington Rutland Supervisory Union. I'm the vice chair to this guy and I'm also on the Teconic and Green on the Clerk and School Board, the Teconic and Green School Board. And that's a good start.
So, stealing my thunder, yes, I'm on the Teconic and Green School Board as a member. I'm chair of the Bennington Rutland Supervisory Union.
That's, that's your name.
And, oh, Jim Salz, yeah, I don't even have a name tag, so.
Jim, I'm the mystery person.
Jim Salzkever and, for, from the Bennington region.
Don Collins and I'm currently on the new Massisquay Valley School District in July 1. But prior to that, I served on the Massisquay Valley Union High School District and prior to that, Slough Elementary School District. And I'm a Franklin County rep and I am so happy because we have a new rep, which is going to be in attendance and participating. I know her family, she's smart.
So I'm Tara Sweet. I am the chair of the Fletcher School District and the Franklin West Supervisory Union. I'm also the chair of that board this year. One question that wasn't on your little bingo thing is I actually, I, I work, or I don't work, I live on a working dairy farm. Want to ask a few?
I bet you milked a cow.
Actually, no. I reserved that job for my husband.
I'm Susan Holson. I'm the director of education services for V S B A. I've been here about two years. And as some of you know, I've also been on school boards with Colleen McKinnon, who was my S U chair.
And I'm Carrie Lamb. I'm the director of operations for V S B A. I've been here for 18 years and I have also served on the Berrytown School Board.
And as a football coach.
And my husband's a football coach. I'm director of football operations.
Adrian Raymond, I'm from Shrewsbury, Vermont. I'm a Rutland rep and I serve on the Mill River Unified Union School District, which is one of the Act 46 mergers.
Thanks. And then on the phone, why don't we start with Christina?
Somebody's here. Oh, thank you.
Although she might have stepped away.
Yeah, she's trying to juggle two things, so you might not be able to.
And Scott, you forgot to unmute the guy.
Yep, we got you.
So, yeah, I'm sitting in there, I'm from New Colton, this county, which I represent with in South Park. I'm chair of the newly formed Elizabeth Southeast Supervision district, which is St. Augustine, Dumberton, and Ilford, and represents about 2,200 students.
Thanks. Kevin?
Kevin Hanson, I am one of two Addison reps and I am on the Mount Abraham Unified School Board for, this is year two for me, so I'm a, I'm a newbie. I, my, myself, my wife, and our two daughters all attended about eight, so it's kind of a local affair.
Another one.
Nice. And Judy?
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, good. I have too many things going on. I am Judy Murray. I am the rep for currently Washington Orange, soon to be next year Kingdom South, I believe. I have been on the Blue Mountain Union School Board since 2013 and with the redrawing of the S U boundaries as a result of Act 46, I, we are now part of the Orgey Supervisory Union and I am the vice chair of that board. And I'm fairly new to the V S B A board. I stepped in for a rep that resigned in August and then I was just newly elected, so I'm pretty new too.
Perfect. I just want to say thank you to all of you guys, the ones that are here for another go-round and also the brand-new members that we're welcoming tonight. I really appreciate the commitment because I know it's not easy, but I think that you'll find that this is a pretty great board to sit on. We get a lot done, but we have some fun too. But you'll see the impacts that your work here has, both at the local and at the state level as well too. So thank you for taking the time, we greatly appreciate it. Moving on then, to let you know actually what you'll be doing. And so I will turn it over to Sue and Susan for that.
Thank you, Neil. So normally when we have new board members at the V S B A, there is an orientation prior to this board meeting, but we have so many new people that we felt like it was important to go through the information with everyone, so everyone's operating from the same information. So there is a PowerPoint presentation that's up here. It's also in your packets, so if you can't see it, you can look at your packet or you can certainly move around so that you can see it. Just a little background on the V S B A, it's a nonprofit organization and it was incorporated in, way back in 1961. And the purposes are on the slide, promoting and stimulating interest in education, cooperating with other organized educational groups, and assisting school directors in promoting better educational opportunities for the children of Vermont. And it's governed by board of directors, which is here, and has bylaws that are modified from time to time and those, we do have a few that were modified just last week at the annual meeting. This is just a review of the general standards for nonprofit directors from Vermont statute and a director is required to discharge their duties, including being a member of the committee, acting in good faith, and with the care of an ordinarily prudent person in like positions and in a manner that they reasonably, reasonably believe to be in the best interests of the association. Oops, I think I skipped one. There we are. Okay. In, back in 2016, the V S B A board adopted a code of ethics and that has expectations for board members in it and a process for resolving any issues at the board level and it tracks Vermont statute regarding the duties for nonprofit boards. And the first duty in the statute is duty of care. And this requires board members to take care of the association by ensuring prudent use of its assets, facilities, and people and generating goodwill. Also providing oversight that ensures that the activities of the association advance its effectiveness and its sustainability. So that is the duty of care. The next one is duty of loyalty. So the duty of loyalty requires that board members make decisions that are in the best interest of the association, they're not in an individual's self-interest, and that includes personal or financial interests. And it also includes avoiding taking any actions or making any representations that would compromise the authority of the full board to make decisions on behalf of the association. And the last one is called duty of obedience. And basically, this one is just ensuring that the association is following its laws and its bylaws. And our bylaws are in this booklet that you received. The booklet includes the bylaws, the resolutions, and the policies. And so we're ensuring that those are being followed and that board members are conducting themselves in meetings in adherence with those policies and purposes and not engaging in activities that would harm the association's mission. And just to follow up, what is an association? It's a group of people that come together to solve common problems, meet common needs, and accomplish goals. And the next part I'm going to, I'll click, but Susan's going to.
I can click from here.
Oh, you can click from there, okay.
I think so. I can. So when I, talking with individual boards, we talk about who are you really representing? And that's very much germane here. The question is representative, whose interests are you representing by being on this board? And whose interests should you be representing? So you have a region that you're responsible for, and so that cluster of geographic members, or at least those who attended your regional meeting, are the ones who sent you here. So are you representing them or are you representing the agency, excuse me, the association as an organization? So sometimes the needs of the local and the needs of the statewide association may not align. And this is the question for all of you, is who are you representing in that setting? And there isn't really a right answer. But transparency is really important, so your constituents, hopefully, when I say constituents, the school board members in your regions need to understand and you need to understand, are you representing for the association or representing of the local? If you believe you're representing for, I'm sorry, I said it backwards, then you think, you see yourself as representing your particular geography in this case, your constituency. And so the voice that you bring to the party is self-interests and opinions of that constituency and you vote on behalf of those beliefs. If you're representative of, then you're looking at the whole association, recognizing that you're bringing a voice to the table that does speak to the values and the beliefs of your region, but then you're putting them into context of what's best for this statewide organization and our members statewide. And so then you're voicing the interests and opinions of the people you know best, but on behalf of the overall best interests of this body. So there's a subtle difference there and I think that's one that a lot of board members grapple with, both in your, your local work, you know, and here. So just to kind of put it out there in the open. So we encourage you to define your role, and the bylaws really do too, saying that you're responsible for oversight of the organization, which means you're representative of the association. Regional reps, hello? Regional reps develop liaison relationships, which we're going to talk about in a little bit, to make sure that your regional school board members know what's going on here and that you have their input as well. So like any good communication, it's two ways. So we, in the form of Carrie, provide to each of you the email lists of all current board members in your V S B A region. We ask that any correspondence that you send out also copy Sue, the executive director, just so we're in the loop as to what's going on at the, at that level, at the regional level.
And Neil. And Neil.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Neil also, president and executive director, so the bases are covered there. Carrie, tonight we will send you an introduction email to your region.
I already did. About quarter of five, they went out, which is why I was rushing around.
This is why we love Carrie.
George, did you fix my email?
I don't know. I didn't know it was wrong, so we'll check it at dinner time, I'll check it.
We talked about it at, did you get it, George? If you did, then she fixed it. If I don't get it.
I did.
We'll talk about it later.
And just a heads up, because January's just around the corner, you can tell today. January is school board appreciation month where V S B A makes an effort to recognize all of the many, 884, I think it is, volunteers around the state who serve as elected representatives on their school boards. The early read, just so you know, for this January is that darn tough socks who supported us last year by offering every school board member in the state a free pair of socks has signed on again. I haven't been able to get the details from them yet, but it looks like we're good to go on that again. And that's just a small thing that we as an association can do for our members to remind everybody that they're not alone, you know? We all know how much work and how much hard work goes into board work. So Carrie and I, and we'll talk about staffing levels later on in the evening, we report to the executive director.
Sue, actually, I kind of stepped past my.
I'll do this one.
So, so.
Once I get going, I just don't know. You should have shut me up sooner.
So the staff report to the executive director who reports to the board, so that we ask, this is similar to how things operate with school boards, that if you have a request for staff to perform work that's outside of a task that's assigned by the board or the executive director, that it should be raised at a board meeting for full discussion by the board, or certainly you can speak with me. The executive director should be copied on all email communications between board members and staff. And if you have questions, they should be brought to me quickly so we can get them resolved.
End of slideshow.
Yes, end of slideshow. So to follow up, I just wanted to make sure that you all have this and, and it's good to bring it to every meeting if you can because it certainly is something that we refer to a lot. It's our bylaws, our resolutions, and policies. And every time that you come to a meeting, there will be the mileage sheets, there are these orange sheets, and those are, you can fill out, you need to put your address on the first one that you fill out, but after the first one, Carrie will have your address and you just need to put your name on it.
And sign it.
And sign it.
The signing's the important part, that's what the auditor's looking for.
Okay. So make sure you sign them and you can hand them in.
Should be what we want it, the first one of every year, or for us to be in a while?
Nope. I, once I have your address, I, we're all set. Just, just to confirm that I have the right address is what it is.
Does anyone, oh, go ahead.
I was wondering if the, if the association handbook is updated based on the changes that were made at the annual meeting?
Yes.
So this is brand spanking new then?
Hence why, another reason why I was.
Literally hot off the presses.
Why I was running around so frantically right at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you.
Trying to get on.
Does anyone have any questions about the roles of the S B A board or about the handbook?
This, this is Kevin. Obviously, I'm not at the meeting tonight. Is the handbook in electronic form or something that can be sent out?
It will, you'll get a hard copy of it in the mail.
We'll send you one in the mail, Kevin. And, and actually, we do update the website with our bylaws and resolutions.
Hasn't happened yet, but it will be very soon.
Yep, it'll be up there.
Just wondering, is it?
Okay, great, thanks.
Is that going out to all school board members or just the board?
The handbook? That's the V S B A board handbook.
Okay. I was just thinking, okay. Later.
Okay.
Any other, yeah, David?
I just wanted to comment on the, on the presentation, the, the section on representative for versus representative of. I appreciate the effort to make it nuanced in the, when it states representative of, that whole nuance, because that's, people are much happier with black and white and it's much harder to articulate a balanced dynamic, which is great. And I think whoever did this has done a very good job of expressing how it is really important that we, we do express the views and beliefs and values and self-interests of our organization, I mean, of where we come from, our region, because that's what we know. And so if we, and I'm struggling with this on our local level where our board has come together and everyone feels that they can't represent, they can't express viewpoints from their constituency, they, they have to express a viewpoint, some, some imaginary viewpoint of the whole. And I think it's, it's really smart to allow us to talk about what we know best and then see how that blends together into a new and forges a new and unified consensus. So I really appreciate this effort to not be black and white and to try to capture a dynamic, which is really difficult to capture.
Thank you.
You know, as Sue, as Susan was going through that, I was looking at this, I'm thinking back to the last two years in my region where I had one town that probably was the last holdout for merger in the state, they were very active and you'd get calls, if not, probably not daily, but certainly weekly, don't support anything that's going to close our school, which, you know, there's not, we're not closing schools. And then you had other people who'd say, I, I see some real advantages to this. And so you then come here and it's not like who calls you last or who shouted the loudest, but you try to work through that and say at the same time, but where, where are we as a, for the state of Vermont? So that can really be a tugger.
Yeah.
And most of us experienced it, right?
Yep. So I, yeah, I will say that, I mean, I think the whole, the whole Act 46 discussion, you know, beginning with, at the very beginning, all the way through to the issue related to delay was a very difficult item, you know, for a lot of folks, but for this board as well. You know, what I can say going forward is that I, as chair, want to hear the opinions that everybody brings to the table. We'll do our best to, to talk through those things, to have a discussion on it. But, you know, on the flip side also, you know, eventually things will come down to a vote and, and one, one side will prevail and one won't. And I hope in the interest of a, of a good functioning board, that collectively we can get around whatever the decision that was made at the time. And that is the position of the board moving forward and, you know, I hope that collectively we as a body can, can support that, knowing that we did the due diligence of the, of the discussion and all of that beforehand. So this is not, some of it's easy work, but it's not all easy work. And there will be times when we disagree, but I hope that we can understand where everyone is coming from in, in those discussions and I will do my best to make sure that we head that way and in that direction. Did anybody else have any comments or, or questions related to the, the role of a V S B A board member, or are you all just tremendously excited, looking forward to the prospect of doing this for the next year? And you were excited, I think.
I am excited. I also want to contest something that Don said, that maybe one of the last holdouts to Act 46 is in your regional. I think I got them all. Sorry. But I will continue to, to bring their concerns here and express them and then we go from there, as Neil has said, so.
You won that battle because after Sue and Susan, right, came and talked to. came and talked to our board, and then at the regional meeting, they convinced one of our younger board members that V S B A was a good organization for with thinking. And when we voted to join, and I'm talking with the superintendent the day before, thought it was dead in the water, we were held. But thanks to that fine gentleman, we are in the mix. So you won that one, then.
The other thing that I will add to on this topic is for all of the new board members, and even for some of the board members that have been here for a while, if anything ever comes up in discussion that you're like, what are you guys talking about? Like because you haven't been here for a while, so you don't have some of the history? Please raise your hand or come to me or send me an email, give me a call later if you didn't want to bring it up in the meeting. And we will do our best to make sure that we'll get you up to speed. But you are not required there to sit there oblivious to some of the decisions that have been made by this body before or some of the things that have happened already. So don't hesitate. Please reach out and let us know if we need to explain something. Am I correct in assuming that we are now sort of back on or ahead of schedule?
Yes.
And dinner is scheduled for six?
Six o'clock. Can I just say too, I don't know if some of the new people know this, we videotape all of our board meetings and they go up on our website on the About Us section of the website. So that's why Kim was here.
Yep. So while we are a private organization, for the sake of transparency, all of our meetings are recorded and then posted. So don't say any disparaging things about your fellow board members back home. They could find out about it. And that would make things a little awkward for you. But that being said, I think Carrie just stepped out. Did we want to cover anything before dinner? Or if dinner is ready, did we just want to...
I'm not sure if it's ready. So we could certainly go a little further in the agenda.
Okay.
Susan, your turn. Can I just put in a really quick plug for the podcast series? I'm recording board members from around the state, not just V S B A board members, on a quickie 15-minute podcast series that we're going to be introducing in January. And I particularly reach out to you, since we see each other once a month, and I'm available to record you either before or if you're really dedicated, after this meeting here in the office, which makes it better quality than if we do it over the phone. So if you're interested, or if I can twist your arm, reach out to me, please. Thank you.
And actually, what I think might be good, so the part of the discussion over dinner was to discuss the regional representative outreach plans.
Yes.
Would you mind describing it to the new folks that have not had to do that yet, exactly what they're going to be talking about?
Yes. So over dinner, we would like you to get together with the other regional representative from your region, if they're here. And if not, you can certainly join another group and talk about the ways that you're going to be conducting outreach to the board members in your region. And as Susan said, you should have received an email earlier today, before the meeting, with all of the contact information for all of the board members in your region. And if you can sort of strategize ways that you're going to be reaching out to them. And what we suggest is that you have, you know, quite soon, an initial email to them introducing yourself to them, especially if you're new. That would be great to open up those lines of communication so they'll be able to get in touch with you. So that's the plan for over dinner, is to talk about how you're going, whether you're going to do that, you know, together, the two of you, or whether you're going to do it individually. And sort of your plan for how the two of you are going to keep your regional board members informed and also get information back from them.
I was thinking, would potentially be helpful to kind of try to put together the best ideas from all of that and share them around. Somebody else is going to have a better idea than I have, for sure.
So if I can jump in here, I was going to suggest that we do that. Because I remember last year, it was really helpful to get ideas. Just go around the room. If you've got a good idea, then people doing it in their own duo will be able to say, how about this? Honestly, I haven't had any luck whatsoever with my region. Christina and I send out a thing and I don't think we get a single reply to it, which is frustrating to me. So if anybody's got good ideas, spring them now. Is that okay, if we spend a few minutes on that?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Kelly?
Not hearing from your constituency is a good thing. That means people are happy. When you're unhappy, then you'll hear from them. I was just wondering if, you know, Kim's going to teach me so much. I'm going to learn so much and follow her guidance. But I'm just wondering if there are centralized communications that are going out from the V S B A so that we don't cross our messages in any way? So that it's consistent messaging around the state? And I don't know what your past practice has been or if there are thoughts about that.
Yeah. So the answer to your question is yes, there are centralized messages that come out from the V S B A. And what you will find is that in addition to this introductory email that we encourage all of you to send, because you are the newly elected reps from your region, there are certain times throughout the year where the executive director will come forward and say, hey, it would be really helpful if I could get you, as the regional rep, to engage your group on matter X. And so in some cases, we can provide some template email language for that outreach. Or you could certainly also use that as the basis for crafting your own email.
Yes.
Did I capture that accurately? Sorry. In the past, in a similar vein, you know, there are some regions where if your local legislators are particularly influential in certain committees or on certain subjects, then I've found in the past, the executive director reaching out on that can be a good way for us to be able to serve the organization and the cause of education. Yeah. So I think, you know, we're talking maybe about, you know, four to five times a year that we'll be asking you to send these emails out. We want to be conscious that we're not getting up your board members too frequently, so it just becomes noise. But on some particular issues that we think it's beneficial for you to have that local outreach and to help the board in that matter. Done.
Sue, the previous representative with whom I served, we had talked about sending out, like after a meeting, kind of key information or decisions that might be made. It really never came to pass. We just didn't connect with our schedules and decided we were going to break it up. I do certain districts and she'd be certain districts. But why I'm raising that is, as I've thought about it, would it be inappropriate when we get the agenda? We usually see the agenda, what, four or five days before the meeting?
Friday. You're going to get a Friday?
To take and send out to all of the board members in our region, letting them know what's on the agenda, in case they want to give us input, you know?
You could certainly set up the agenda.
Many organizations report what happened. But I guess as a board member, I would rather know what maybe is going to happen if I wanted to, than getting a report, well, we just, at V S B A on the 13th of November, these are the four or five major decisions made, whatever. That's kind of like, wow, they did it and they're telling me. And they're not apologizing, but they're telling me. Would it be appropriate to maybe send something out before the meeting, if the time is there, and say, you know, we're going to be there Wednesday night? If you have any thoughts on any of these topics? I don't know. I don't want to open a can of worms and have people start guessing what the talk, what the agenda item means. But something to think about.
Yeah, we don't get extremely detailed in the agenda, as you've noticed. So I suppose that that is a possibility.
I think, I'm not looking for an answer tonight. And Tim and I need to speak. But occasionally, there are three or four items that might be of interest to people. I'm not, you know, a Building by Teachers Advisory Council. Probably isn't of much interest all well. If some people felt really strongly in my area, they might say, we hope you will seek that. I don't see that happening, because I've been very active with them. Probably just soon, I didn't seek it, but... But anyway, just something to consider. It's tough to get communications, really tough to get communications. But that's why we should work at it.
Sure. Any other questions related to the outreach or the discussion that we teed up over dinner?
Dinner's ready.
Seeing none.
Thanksgiving dinner.
Ooh, awesome.
Neil, excuse me. Before we go to eat, I think it'd be appropriate, we have three people on tonight, on the line.
Yep.
To go through the agenda. I mean, it's kind of unusual to have that many people on the conference call, isn't it, have three people?
Yeah.
Just to let them know what else is on the agenda. I'm sure they have it.
They all have the packets.
Oh, they're all board members that have a packet?
Right.
It was all, they have...
I know they do. If they're like me, they're by the phone and their packet might be somewhere else. But, you know.
You can go get it while they're having dinner.
All right, so folks, um...
Just tell them to be there.
We're going to pause for dinner. Don wants to make sure that you've all got your agendas with you. So if you don't, please feel free to let me know and we'll make sure that we send it to you again. All right.
Okay.
I'm going to take that as a pause. Please, feel free to grab some dinner. I hope that your discussions on your regional outreach went well. I let Carrie know, I do have, I will dig up one of the prior emails that we sent out in the Windsor region that Amy and I did a while back. If you're looking for a template of what we've done in the past, it just might help you a little bit to give you an idea of the types of outreach that we've done in the past. So I'll pass that along to Carrie and she'll forward that to you all. The next item up on the agenda is our V S B A strategic plan. So for those of you that are new with us, the V S B A does have a strategic plan. We actually are in the process right now of updating that. The last plan, which ran from 2017 to 2019, was very useful for the organization. And the strategic plan that you see that's included in your packet tonight is really just an extension of that plan from 2017 to 2019. So not a whole lot has changed. But what you see currently in the packet is the work that a committee did, was developed some more at our annual retreat, which we held back in June.
June, yes.
Then it was polished up a little bit. So in your packet tonight is the current state of the new strategic plan that we are working on for your review. The intention is to bring this back in the December meeting for board approval. Okay? So you don't need to act on it tonight, but we did want to go over it briefly. And for that brief overview, I will hand it over to...
Susan.
Susan.
So for background, if anybody's interested, I have copies of the 2017 to 2019 strategic plan as it was approved and we've lived with. So if any of, especially the newer board members want that to be able to compare, I will send these around and help yourselves. Oh, can I have one? So following modeling what we preach in strategic planning, we have five goal areas that we have included in the strategic plan. And it was the will of the committee and the full board at the retreat to maintain those five. And they are education leadership, support for good governance, educational equity, labor relations and internal management. And so those five continue on in the proposed 2020 to 2022 plan that you have in your packet. And I did not include this in the packet because I didn't want it to be confusing to have two of them in there. But if you do undertake a side-by-side comparison, you'll see that there are not a ton of changes. There are subtle shifts. And the old version that we just passed around also includes strategies for accomplishing those indicators and which speak to the goal statements in each of those five areas. As is the case with the strategic plan for your district, which I'm sure you all have. It's up to the administration to establish those strategies to address the indicators that have been approved by the board. And so for our discussion in December, it is our intent to have strategies in there as well. But those are really more for exposure than they are for deep discussion by this body. Yeah, Mark?
Susan, what was the process to get to here?
I cannot speak to the original one, because I wasn't around in those days. But the process for the modifications that were made is there was a committee of this body, which I believe was four members, or maybe five, volunteered to be on that committee, who reviewed the existing plan, decided it was not too far off from where we want to continue to go. And we had a few minor changes. And then, as Neil said, it went to the entire board at the board retreat, which is in June. And we did a lot of work with it there with the whole board, which led to more changes. And some subtle shifts in focus based on what we've already accomplished towards those particular goals. And then the committee put this back together again with incorporating those recommendations and suggestions. And the committee has passed this on so that it's ready for board discussion. And then we kind of stalled, because we had personnel shifting and board vacancies and it just wasn't, it didn't feel like we could be doing this in a meaningful way. The other piece of it is...
I will add to that as well, too, that we also did a survey.
Oh, yes, thank you, we did.
So we did attempt to capture input beyond just this body. So there was a survey that went out to full V S B A membership that asked them to opine on how well we were doing in meeting the set of goals from the last strategic plan and whether or not we thought that those goals should be carried forward in the new one. And that was a question, I think, of anything else that you think the V S B A ought to be focusing on. So that did go out to the full membership and we used that input to help drive what you see in the current document.
Thank you, Neil, that's right. Again, modeling good board behavior. The staff, we don't have this included in tonight's agenda or packet, but typically, at these meetings, the staff provides you with a strategic plan monitoring report so that you have progress reporting on a regular basis on these different goal areas. And the format of that report also identifies which indicator, what strategy, and then shares the outcome information that sort of strings that along in terms of the work that we as a staff have been doing over the last month, or occasionally it's two months. Anything else?
I don't think so. I think that covers it. I will say that the monitoring report that you will typically see in your board tech, I think, is a very useful tool just to make sure that we, as an organization, are sticking with the items that we've outlined in our strategic plan to make sure that we're doing what we said we were going to do. And also, I think it's a great way for staff to make sure that the items that they're working on match up with something in the strategic plan. And then when we get together on a monthly basis to review that monitoring report and we can say, yeah, we're doing, you know, exactly what we thought we were doing. Or, you know, checking in on a few things to say, I'm not sure I understand what's going on there. Can we get a little bit more of an explanation? So I will say, when I first joined this board, I thought that that monitoring report, and in fact, the whole strategic plan, it was very eye-opening to me to sort of, I guess, as Susan mentioned, modeling the type of behavior or the type of action you'd like to see on your own board. It was a great tool. Like I could essentially look at the agenda, look at that monitoring report and know that what we had done collectively as a group over the prior month was absolutely meeting the things and the goals that we set out for ourselves before. So it was a really great way to make it tangible for me.
And just to close that loop, it is something, when I go out and meet the boards, it's something that I strongly encourage. And I use our mechanism as a sample, an example of an effective way to monitor your district's performance in various ways. So happy to talk to anybody about that.
This is Kevin on the phone.
Yep.
I'm kind of late to the game, but looking at Section 1 underneath indicators, bullet 4. I don't see any reference to Act 173. And I was just wondering if there was a reason to that.
Are you looking, and so you're looking at Section 1, education leadership, and then the fourth bullet item under indicators?
Yes.
I wasn't around when that was developed, but I'm thinking it refers specifically to the agenda for a world-class education. And I believe those were the... And I believe those were the, that was the legislation that they identified that pursued that agenda.
Pursued the agenda also.
And also in item three, educational equity, the third bullet is not referenced either. No, I mean, I'm asking why? We spent a lot of time in September discussing 173 and with consultants hired with consortium, and it seems like there's some effort and there's some action or activity around it. Why it's not in the strategic plan?
Right. Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't see any reason why we can't include any of the items there. The only danger that I find in doing something like that is sometimes the names change on things. And so you refer to something as Act 166 or Act 173, and then a few years down the road, forget what that actually referred to.
We don't know what year the act was from.
Yeah, and then the act number is getting reused.
Right.
So Amy?
So what Sue was saying, this is Amy. I can't remember who.
Kevin.
Kevin, I can. There was a meeting probably three years ago, maybe four years ago, before Act 173 was even probably being talked about. And the meeting was between the Vermont School Board Association and the Vermont Superintendent Association that developed the world-class agenda for a world-class education, which was proposed maybe eight or nine years ago. And this meeting that we had three years ago, maybe, was to see what was still relevant, where we needed to be working. And at that point in time, it was only Act 166, Act 77, 46, et cetera. And that's why 173 isn't there is because that wasn't part of our conversation for the agenda.
So that wasn't acted more recently then?
Act 173 was, yes.
Yes.
But I do think 173 would fall under any of, at least two of the pillars under Agenda for a World Class Education.
Right.
I think it would make sense to add it. I think it's a pretty critical piece of legislation that speaks to assuring success for every student, supporting a new vision for teaching and learning, engaging and supporting families and communities. So I think that if we're speaking to the others by specific name, we'd be wise to include it.
Okay. So can I actually have, are we willing to make that update for...
Oh, yeah, definitely. If there's consensus.
It's sounding like there's. I didn't see anybody opposed to it, so.
Question.
Dan?
Well, that sort of brings up the question I was gonna ask. What if we come across something at home? It almost seems like we should just put all of these suggestions into a shared document of some kind, rather than doing by consensus, but say, okay, this came up, this suggestion came up, et cetera, then deal with them all at the same time. Does that seem to make sense?
I can attend them to...
Yeah. That may be the only one, but we may stumble across stuff when we're looking at it, too.
Yes, I would defer to staff as to whether or not, you know, be it a Google Doc or some other mechanism, or do we have the ability to... Susan?
Well, we do have the ability, but I'm almost wondering if that isn't better held for the next meeting, for the discussion prior to adoption?
I think what, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I think what Dan is suggesting is that maybe over the course of the month, those things are added to the document, and then that would be the basis for the discussion that happens at the next meeting.
Right, so you don't just bring it cold to the meeting and say, here's what I think, but rather have a chance to review it ahead of time or whatever.
Yeah. I will say, depending on how many changes are there, I am a little hesitant on that approach because it can turn into a wordsmithing exercise that I want to avoid. Kelly?
Just two comments. One is just, I'm wondering about, does that turn into discussion and it's not a warned discussion?
It's okay, we're not a public body.
Well, oh. Whatever.
So technically that piece, but...
But there's that piece.
Yep.
And then I'm just wondering, is there, what is the value in actually naming the legislation instead of just keeping it to the world-class education as defined in that document? And I'm just wondering, what's the value in listing the legislation? Because you could leave something off a list. Every time you have a list, somebody gets left out. And so what's the purpose? What's the intent behind this particular bullet for this particular session? Section? Does that make sense?
Yes.
And I don't know. I wasn't part of the drafting or anything. I'm just...
I'm wondering if I remember necessarily, but I think there, it could be that there was concern that these were acts that weren't yet being supported in implementation. And so rather than letting there be something else that before these had the support for implementation, but I don't, I don't recall the crafting, I'm sure I was around for it, but the crafting, I do remember the meeting that we had collectively.
Yeah.
But I would, maybe it's dated, maybe, right, as we look at it with fresh eyes, do we need to delineate the acts that we're talking about?
Just a kind of a thought on that. I actually find it useful because it becomes less generic and more specific. However, it can become dated very quickly, which, you know, one way you could deal with that is, you know, such as Act 166, et cetera, kind of leaving room that you could...
Yeah, to say such as.
When 173 comes, it's on par with those others, you know, and sort of won't be assumed.
And maybe just have the, you know, if it's there, have the full name of the act.
Yes. So as a staff, we talked about that. We're gonna have each of the acts have a way to state it exactly the same way every time. It'll be like Act 46 of 2019 in parentheses after it, you know, whatever, the merging, whatever. But have a document so we always do it the same way and everything, because not everyone knows what Act 177, one Act 166, Act 46, you know, there's so many of them that not everyone knows. You can talk all week long.
Maybe.
And there's also, because on the Vermont School Board Association website, there is a page on the agenda for a world-class education, there is a document. So if we were to be talking here about, well, let's just change this in our strategic plan and world-class education is this, it also needs to be kind of reconciled with the document that was created. So that would be my hesitation on changing a bunch of the language.
Just one, I thought I recalled that, you know, the agenda is a really important document for this group for education. But I thought it was actually about them to go, or review for update potentially, or is that correct or not?
I'm not sure. I'll have to get back to you about that.
Okay. I thought it being, it was mentioned at some point, but, you know, I don't know whether that's necessary.
That might be the case.
Yeah, I'm looking to see what the date is on the current one. Because I know we met three or four years ago.
Well, it started off, I got the summary, which says, 2012 partnered.
Yeah, so the current document is 2016.
So it was three years ago.
Yeah.
Yes. Was that...
Dan, as you're looking through this, your recommendation, was it because you see a bunch of things in here that you personally want to see modified?
No, it wasn't. It was just thought, if you could slow down the process of editing by committee, to have them ahead of time, people could say, that one looks good to me, I'd go support that. This one I don't want, whatever. Just an idea to expedite, that would be my thought. There may not be anything, maybe this is the only one that come up, but...
Okay. Do we have any members of the committee that worked on this current version? Do we recall who those folks were and if they're still with us?
Were you on that?
I don't think I was, unless it was...
I think you were.
I think, I was very impactful there.
And it made a big impact on you.
It was so much fun.
Can you remind me when?
This would have been in spring.
I remember the process of the value, like looking at the results that came in from the survey. But if we can, I apologize, because I'm not gonna be able to speak to that process with any specificity.
May ninth, you were. You were traveling, so you were calling in.
I did it from the road. Okay.
So this was very obvious.
No, she was not involved.
She was not?
That was the other committee. This was the two of you, Gio and Flor.
Well, I think we could, if people have suggestions or questions, if they want to email them to me, we could keep a list of those at least and have them provided to you in the agenda packet, so you could be thinking about them ahead of the meeting. Does that work?
That works. I actually prefer that to the other, I don't want to get into a situation where we're rewriting this entire document by committee online over the course of this next month. David?
There's another way of looking at this document, which is as a working or living document. So it's going to evolve, it's going to adjust, it's never going to be perfect. Does it capture the essence of what we need? Is it gonna keep us moving in the right directions? If you look at the bullet points, it's not as everything that we should be accomplishing, but some of the areas we should be focusing on within those frameworks. Then I think, I mean, I've got lots of questions and I might work some things differently, but I think it's very effective the way it's written. So my proposal would be, we're all gonna have issues with elements of it, but overall, does it go where we want to go? Does it take us to Toronto or wherever we're going? And I think it does. So that's why I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I'm not sure it's necessary to go through a long process to work on it.
Okay. So that's...
I'm just thinking, especially since many of us are new and wouldn't have seen the strategic plan monitoring report, if it would be helpful to see a more recent monitoring report, then maybe the end of, you know, FY19. So your last one from last year, last fiscal year, so that we would have a frame of reference for how the staff uses the tool to characterize the work they're doing. And it's an awesome tool. And it would be helpful, I think, then in seeing how it's used, understanding maybe how that relates here. And then the other request might be, and it can be a no, is there a red line version so we would see exactly what changed? Like, is there a change, track changes?
Like when you see legislation, you see all the...
Yeah, just, I didn't know if you guys created the new strategic plan, working from the old, and if there's a track changes.
I don't believe there is, but I could certainly create that.
I mean, we can look side by side, too. I just didn't know if there was a track changes. That's a little bit easier than just looking back and forth.
Yep. So let me make the following proposal, that if, over the course of this next month, if there are items in here that board members think need to be updated or changed, send those proposed changes to Sue. One thing that I will add is that from the discussion with both Sue and Susan, the intent with this document is that when you see it next month, it will also include in its strategies, which it doesn't have right now. Those strategies are the more particular items, so the actual things, I think, that are going to be in process. And I think that might be an effective way of capturing things like, well, it is Act 173, and this is what we're doing in that particular area. So that you'll see those strategies in there to provide some specificity. But what the board should really focus on is the statement, the goal statement and the indicators that are in here now, because this is what we'll need approval on next month. I think the addition of the strategy, so the work staff's actually gonna do, might provide Dan some of that detail and Jim that we think might be valuable to help with adoption, but not necessary for adoption, I would say. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
Okay. So please reach out to Sue if you have anything in the next month. Moving on to V S B A staffing updates.
So I wanted to update everyone that we have advertised for a position to fill the position that I was in. It's slightly different in that we, in the past couple of years, we've had two attorneys here at the V S B A. We weren't sure that we necessarily needed to have two attorneys. The other, the position that I left was a Director of Legal and Policy Services. The position that we're advertising for is Director of Public Policy. And what we are looking for is someone who can look at rules that are being proposed, legislation, and be able to let us know, how is this going to actually affect education on the ground, you know? How's, what are the impacts going to be? So it's been advertised for two weeks, I believe, and closed yesterday. And we'll be doing some interviews next week and then see where we go from there. But we wanted to make sure that you were all updated and let you know that it's been out there. And if you have any questions, feel free to let me know, either now or later.
And may you, do you have a pool of enough people respond that you feel comfortable?
Yes. Yeah, we have enough people that have responded. And I believe we'll be interviewing two or three people. Yeah.
Any other questions for Sue?
So Sue, besides you, who's gonna be involved with interviews?
I'm going to, I've asked Susan to be involved, and there will be one board member, it will probably be Neil, because he's available to help us, we think.
With unlimited time and energy for it.
And there may be someone also from one of our partner organizations, either Visbit or V P A or V S A, if they are available to participate. So that's the current plan. And certainly, you know, if there's a board member that has a burning desire to participate, we'd be happy to have you join us.
Sure, I guess to follow up on, well, this person, I saw the ad, I thought, that's nice. I like the idea, but maybe changing it a little bit. But this person also work with legislative updates?
Yes. That will be a major...
That's a pretty valuable service to our...
Yes, yeah.
Okay, good. That's great.
Absolutely. So we need to find someone who has that capability. Yeah.
And then the intention would be that they might be in place by the December meeting then, too?
They might be in place by the December meeting. That would be ideal, if they could. We definitely would like to have them by, at the latest, by the beginning of the legislative session.
All right. Any other questions about the staffing update? All right, moving along then to a resolution for the authorized signers of the V S B A checking account. It needs to be updated.
Yes. So you can get your mileage checks.
Or any checks.
Right, right.
So currently, we have some old signers on there that need to be updated.
She's not that old.
Wow, that was cold.
Yeah, how do I...
A lot younger than I am.
We have some signers on there that are no longer with the organization, that way.
All of the signers on there are no longer with the association.
Yeah, so I believe on there right now for the bank's approval is Nicole, and it goes so back, is that Harry Frank is on there, too, who is our previous, our previous Susan. So the bank does need a board in motion, and we have crafted one for your entertainment. And that would be a motion for a resolution to alter the authorized signers on checking account of V S B A as follows. Remove Nicole Mason, Harry Frank, and add Sue Seglowski and Susan Holson. So if a board member were so inclined to make that motion...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Amy, seconded by Dan, is there any discussion on the motion?
Can I just ask, it says checking account in the motion?
It does.
Can we say checking count slash money market? Because we have a rollover.
Sure. Did we get the language from the bank, or was that...
Yeah, but they didn't include, they must not have included the money market. Money market's a rollover, but...
Okay, just in case.
Yeah.
You okay with that, Amy?
I am. How are you?
So apparently, following strict rules, everybody's okay with it. So apparently, following strict rules, everybody's okay with it.
See, just one thought, you know, whether two signers is enough and whether, you know, you need controls in place and all that, but, you know, potentially, you know, like you being on the account as well as a backup signer or something like that, I don't know.
I'm going to guess in the years that we've done this, we haven't had an issue with having two staff members on.
I'm guessing not, since we've only had one.
We've been offered one in seven years.
So we do have an internal procedure. The executive director always signs. If she's not available, then Susan would sign. But when the executive director returns, she signs off on the warrant, the full list. So that she always is responsible. Because at one point, we had a problem because we had to have two signatures on checks, but the problem with that was that, you know, both people thought the other people checked it. So ultimately, Sue's, you know, in charge of what goes on with it. And we've usually kept it to two signers, just to restrain.
Yep. Make sense, Jim?
That's fine.
Okay. So if there is no further discussion, then we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We should are.
We're going great on time.
We are.
So declare it.
Oh, sorry, I did so bad.
Oh, you too, happy.
I do have the gavel, it was handed to me this evening. I'm not much of a gavel person. If you guys need it, I can slam it, but I'm just going to let it go for now.
Can I?
Moving up, oh, sorry, carry.
Can I make one suggestion? When we have motions, because we take it from, the minutes from the camera, if, whenever someone makes a motion, if you can say your name and your region, and then make the motion, and if you're going to second, then say your name and your region, and second it, so that we are sure to have everything on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Amy Windsor.
Yeah.
Dan Wyndham.
Wyndham.
Conan Windsor.
All right, perfect. Moving on then to the Building Bright Futures Advisory Council appointments.
Yes, I can give some background on Building Bright Futures. Because I've actually been serving as the representative on the Building Bright Futures Advisory Council. And that council was established by statute. And it's Vermont's public-private partnership. It's established by 33 VSA Section 4602, if anyone wants to look it up. And its purpose is to advise the governor and the legislature on the state's early childhood care, health, and education. It's a rather large council, there's 23 members. There's Secretary of Human Services are designated and a bunch of other secretaries or commissioners, and they're designated, a member of the House of Representatives, there's a member of the Senate, and then there are 14 at-large members. And one of those 14 at-large members needs to be a representative of, it has to be a member of a school board, can be any school board, to be recommended by the Vermont School Boards Association. And I was a member of a school board up until I became the executive director. At that point, I decided that I needed to step down from my board, so I'm no longer able to continue serving in that role because I'm not a school board member anymore. So this board needs to appoint someone. And the process that will happen after that is that name will go to the nominating committee of the Building Bright Futures Council. And then they will send the name on to the governor. And the person who, whose name it is, needs to fill out a bunch of paperwork to the governor and then go through the process of getting appointed by the governor. So that's the background on what Building Bright Futures is and the process. The, what it involves is a monthly meeting that's either in Montpelier or Burlington, that is during the day. And then there are also committee meetings as well. And that's one of the reasons that I was doing it, is because I could do it. I was a school board member, but I also was in a job here where it allowed me to go and always attend all of these meetings. So I'll hand it back over to Neil at this point to let you know about finding someone to do that.
So, before you all get real nervous, thinking it's going to have to be one of you folk, we actually have someone who's willing to fill this role for us. So it is Flor Diaz-Smith. She was a prior SBA board member, who was with us up through the annual meeting, but is no longer with us, but has agreed to serve in this function on behalf of the SBA. And I think most importantly, has committed that she does have the time for this because it sounds like it can be, at least for the short term, rather time-consuming. So we have one. But Jim?
You looking for a nomination?
Yeah, that's where I was going. So we've got one candidate right now, I'm looking for a nomination if someone would like to make that.
I will nominate Flor Diaz-Smith to be the appointment from the SBA for Building Bright Futures Advisory Council, Jim Salzgiver, Bennington.
Nice, is there a second for that?
It's not necessary. It's not a. One could, but it's not necessary.
Well, that's if you're having an election.
Yeah, this is not an election, this is this body choosing to appoint someone to a commission.
Right, it's not a nomination, really, it's an appointment, isn't it?
Right, okay.
I'll second the nomination.
Thank you. Michelle.
From Washington.
From Washington, D.C.
It'll take a little getting used to it, folks, don't worry. Any discussion on the nomination?
Many thanks, Flor. Should we vote yea on this one?
Okay, all those in favor then, say yes. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Flor gets it unanimously. For those of you who have not yet met Flor, she is a fantastic board member. And we are sorry that she is not on the SBA board any longer, but very pleased that she was willing to step into this role. So we will let her know the, I guess, the good news, depending on how you look at it. The good news. And then moving on now to contract for services related to Act 11 statewide bargaining.
So we just wanted to update you because when we knew that Nicole was going to be leaving, we knew that there was going to be a sort of a hole in our organization. And there is a lot of, a lot happening, as you know, with the statewide healthcare bargaining. And that is coming to a conclusion within the next month or so. And there will need to be, if they reach an agreement, which we don't know whether that's going to happen, but if they did, there would need to be a ratification process and education of the voting delegates from each area before they voted. And whatever happens, there's going to be a need for education for board members throughout the state about the agreement that was reached or the arbitration decision. And then there's also going to need to be education for board members about how they conduct their bargaining based on what that decision was. So we're working on a contract with McNeil, Letty, and Sheehan, which is a firm in Burlington, to be able to provide those services to us and have continuity on that. And it's not complete yet, but I think what we were hoping for was authorization from the board for me to sign the contract so that that work could begin. Because it's going to have to be, it pretty much hit the ground running to get that accomplished.
So correct me if I misstate anything. But, so for those of you that are new, the SBA has received some funds from Visbit. It was a service line agreement, and part of the contingency for us receiving those funds was that the SBA was now responsible for providing certain services to our membership. Those services occurred in a couple of categories, but the two that are of importance to us now are supports surrounding collective bargaining, and in particular, what Sue just mentioned was work related to the stuff that's going on with the Act 11 Bargaining Commission. And then the second was also, I think, support for the VHI Board, right?
Right, right.
That money, we had a discussion with McNeil, Letty, and Sheehan. The pool of money that we get from Visbit, for the money that we've got left, we asked them whether or not they would be able to provide these services for us, since it was part of the contracted agreement with Visbit. And the dollars, at least right now through negotiations, look like they're working out right, that we would be able to support this through the funds that we're getting from Visbit to provide these services. You know, one of the good news is, is that because that's where Nicole went and she was doing this work while she was here, she can sort of continue to do that work, but also brings in a whole host of other folks at that firm that do this type of work surrounding collective bargaining and support of the process. We had hoped to maybe have a finalized agreement in place that the full board could look at and review tonight, but we're not quite there yet. But we think we're close. And so tonight, we're just looking for authorization from this board to allow Sue to finalize and sign that contract.
I'm just curious, do you feel comfortable enough with the way the negotiations are going? Kind of say that authority subject to it, continuing to be within the original financial parameters, you know, that we intended?
Yes.
That would work?
Yes.
Yep, so we reviewed the budget today as to how much money we've got allocated for this from the Visbit service line agreement. I think we're looking at about $70,000 still available in that money. And the quote that we've received so far, I'm allowed to share that at this point, was for $6,000 a month for 10 months, plus expenses. So I think that the financial piece is falling within the parameters of the money that we'll have available for this work. So $60,000 plus expenses, and we've got $70,000 on our side to cover this, so.
And this is for the express purpose of getting through the settlement, Adrian's doing for us, and the support to get it ratified and support boards as they negotiate the next round of their contracts, which will no doubt be reacting to the settlement. If there were to be sort of an appeals board, I don't know what will happen out of once the statewide healthcare is enacted and individual employees are appealing a local school district's decision on something. I don't know how far down the process that is, but I am imagining if we need to think about what happens when these things are being implemented, there may be another source for funding or, I don't know if Adrian can even speak to sort of where those sorts of conversations are about how this works when we're.
We had, I mean, the employer commissioners had suggested rounds ago that a grievance process gets set up. I don't know whether or not that will be included in the final decision from the FAPR or from the.
Right, so, okay, so we don't.
So there may not be a process in place.
Yeah.
It may just be a free fall.
And for you new board members, if you're not, just really quickly, Adrian is one of the school board members that sits on that Act 11 Bargaining Commission, just so folks are aware.
And I didn't mean to get in the weeds on it, I was just thinking about the available remaining budget and the potential available additional responsibilities that seem to be, have been unanticipated with the legislation, the cost that would be borne by the SBA financially in addition to the use of our name, quite frankly. And so I just put that out there for us to imagine that if that were necessary, another layer of administration by virtue of an appeals group or something, that we'd probably talk again with Visbit, because they.
Well, there was, so it's my understanding from talking with Sue today that there are actually two, so Visbit provided a certain amount of funds to the commission.
Yeah.
And, but that's separate from what I'm talking about, which is the funds that they provided strictly to the SBA to handle the educational piece surrounding the work of the commission and then collective bargaining.
The full funds were provided to the SBA, but it's allocated to the commission, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that is, that is in addition to the $70,000 that is, yeah.
Well, it seems to me.
Oh, sorry, Dan, one second, because I do, Kevin is backing in first, so Kevin, go ahead.
I'm sorry to butt in, but, so do we have a motion on the floor or not?
Not yet.
Okay, so I would, I think it was January somebody was talking about comparing what we have for funds available from Visbit versus the contract, but I feel we should have some sort of an upset figure on the contract that we allow Sue to go by, so if there's $70,000 there and we think that's going to be consumed by this, we should have that specific dollar amount in the motion.
Okay.
That was my point exactly, Kevin, you took the words right away, excellent.
Which is not atypical to what we've done in the past, but the executive director said not to exceed X amount, so I certainly think that that would be reasonable to include in a motion tonight. That being said, is anyone interested in making a motion? Jim? You look so enthused to do it. Give us some gusto, man.
Jim Salzgiver, Bennington, yes. I'd make a motion to approve Sue Seglowski to complete negotiations and to sign an agreement for a contract for services related to Act 11 statewide bargaining, subject to the financial obligations of the SBA being within the roughly $70,000 we have currently allocated from Visbit contract.
Can you repeat that? Just joking, is there a second?
I'll second, George Gahan, Robyn.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, moving on then to executive committee election. So for those of you that are new, just a little brief outline here, so you might be curious as to why we have a president but nobody else this evening. So the SBA president is elected in August to then begin the term at the end of the annual meeting. So that is why we have a president, but what we are missing are all the other members of the executive committee. So the vice president, the treasurer, and then two members at large. So that is what we have to take up for the remainder of the evening tonight. And so first up then, going in order, I will look for nominations for vice presidents. David?
I nominate Jim Salzgiver.
Okay.
David?
We don't, as Dan pointed out earlier, you do not need a second, no.
I can't follow that.
When we get in trouble, we've got our little book here.
I saw that.
But we do not need a second on nominations. So we have Jim Salzgiver, are there any other nominations?
Neil, check your email, please.
I do, I would like to nominate Don Collins, Dan MacArthur, Wyndham Region.
Thank you.
I'm not connected to the internet yet, hang on.
Sue, it's on yours. Okay.
I know, it's killing me too, I can't.
I can tell, you look so nerve-dropping.
You don't have, you don't have an email from me? No.
I sent it, went out and never returned.
My email hasn't updated yet, so that's why I'm not seeing it.
When technology fails.
Going, is this old school, you carry that?
You don't need to, you just carry it on.
I'm exactly sure what it is.
Shoves a laptop along the counter.
Oh, okay, there's a nomination in there.
Okay, so now we also have a nomination for Dan for vice president. Okay, so now we also have a nomination for Dan for vice president.
I'm going to decline that nomination, I don't know who it came from. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I mean, we can't say, so the email was, that was from Judy. Yeah, so it did come from Judy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Judy.
Who's no longer on the phone, because she drove into Canada, disconnect.
All right, so, but you are declining the nomination?
I am, yes.
Okay, so are there any other nominations for vice presidents? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close nominations and then move on to the vote. You will get a...
We'll get a...
Paper ballot?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, do we have a chance to speak? Either the candidate or the state?
Doesn't want to pass us.
If there are no objections, I will allow the candidates to speak ahead of the vote. Anyone opposed to hearing from our candidates for vice president?
President, first, and I think it would be helpful, because otherwise I have nothing.
And I understand the frustration that is associated with that. Flip of the coin, and I will go with Don Collins, C, C is the first letter, C.
And just so you know, the reason that I asked that is that, as I look around this room tonight, and I looked around the room four years ago, there aren't many of us still here. And so I think that, you know, win, lose, or draw, I just think that there's some points that I want to make, having been here four years. And maybe if I kept my mouth shut, I'd stand about a chance of getting elected. You know, I think this is a real exciting time in this organization, I really do. I think Sue and Susan have shown over the last year, maybe more than that last year, that they really are strong on what I call outreach. You know, it's great that some of us come here every month, but this room should be a lot fuller than it is tonight. There are a lot of people who aren't here and aren't on the phone. So one of the things I would like to see, and Jim wins this, and maybe he'll carry this ball, but I really think we need to come up for a plan for recruitment to get people on this board. It kind of seems to me that somebody comes to the meeting and says, I didn't get elected, I'm not going to my local school board, I'm not going to continue, and weeks and months go by, and we have vacant seats. And having served on other boards, that's not a very effective process when fourth of your board members aren't here on any given meeting or a third. So that's one thing I really would like to see us work on. I think I have the time to work with Susan and the executive committee and Neil on something like that. The other thing is, I don't know how many of you were at the meeting unfairly, but resolutions to me, they're really the backbone. That's what we're all about, the resolutions. I don't think we have a big problem in getting resolutions. I think we've worked hard to try to get them out there. But the number of people who then participate in deciding if they're going to be supported for the legislature, I think there's some improvement we can do there. So that's another thing that I really hope that we address during the next year. And probably this last one is probably my biggest concern. I think Sue has done it well, and I was glad to hear her tonight say, the new person, they've changed the job description a little bit. I'm so old that I remember in the legislature that when you said, "This is V S B A's position," people nodded and said, "We need to do it." Because they were talking with their local school board members, and the V S B A people that went to the legislature had the support of the people in the local towns. Certainly, there was some disagreement. But I remember, I was a lobby, I was on the lobbying committee for the superintendents association, and we were not held in the same high regard as V S B A. It was an uphill battle sometimes when there were different positions, because V S B A lost. I think we've lost that. And I say that because I'm still in contact with a number of legislators. Sometimes I call them, sometimes they call me. I'm not sure why they do, but someone might think I'm still there. But I think we're going to have to work really hard to make sure that the V S B A voice is seen as one that speaks for local school districts and how local school districts direct them, which takes me back to the resolutions. So those are three things I'd really like to see us work on, whether I'm elected or not. But I would tell you this, if I am elected to be vice president, then certainly I'll be talking with the rest of the executive board and with Sue on how I can help as a team player, not how I can work as an individual school board member, but how I can work on behalf of the V S B A. So that's who I am. I think I'm on the school board 15 years now. I've been on one board, two boards, now three boards. Worked a lot in the legislature, and the legislature's a tough place. It really is a tough place, because other groups are there full-time, and you can't be there full-time necessarily with V S B A. And then there's the whole, how do you keep your electorate? How do we keep our people informed out in the field? So I think those are some things that I hope I worked on, and if I'm elected, then certainly I'll ask to be part of that. Thank you.
Jim?
Okay, great. I am not a past politician, and I didn't really prepare a campaign speech, unfortunately. You know, basically, you know, I've been on the V S B A board, been on school boards for, you know, a dozen years. And just on the V S B A board for the past couple, it's been a fabulous experience. I mean, the V S B A board, I, you know, sort of resisted joining it at first, and that was a really stupid mistake, and it's been a wonderful experience. In the last year, also, joining the, essentially, the executive committee, so being a little bit more involved in, you know, some of the decision-making things. You know, back in the, before I was on that, it was always, well, how do they do things? And, you know, now I sort of know. And I think that, you know, it's important to always keep in mind that, you know, that this organization, whether it's the executive committee, the full board, or whatever, you know, we are representing a larger group of people. The executive committee is acting on behalf of the board, you know, trying to ensure that they, that they understand what the board, and, you know, especially through the resolutions and all, understand what the board is trying to accomplish, what the organization is trying to accomplish. I think it's, you know, tonight we have the strategic and operational plan, the resolutions. I also, you know, go to bylaws and other documents like that that define what this organization is about. One of my, you know, focus, one focus for me on, you know, trying to, you know, any of my school board-related positions, including this, is, you know, trying to do the right thing and represent the organization and the people, you know, I'm working on behalf of in the best way possible. I think this, this past year has taught me a whole lot about how the V S B A works and how education and legislation and education, et cetera, works in the state of Vermont. Continue to be, you know, I love the work, so, you know, I'm interested in continuing to, you know, take somewhat more of a role this year. The vice president typically oversees the resolutions process, which I've made some suggestions in the past to make that a little bit more of a year-round thing, where we kind of continue to keep the resolution in mind, you know, all our, you know, school board members and all recognizing that that's what we do. Or that's, you know, that's the focus of the organization, is to make progress on those resolutions. I think this year, as Don said, this year's a pretty big year in that we've had a couple of tough years. We've, you know, Act 46 was extremely tough on school boards around the state, school board members, especially tough on the V S B A. You know, we've lost a little bit of credibility because people thought we were not acting on their behalf. I think we have some real work to do, and I think we're in an excellent position in the coming year to try to repair some of that, you know, some of the old dings and, you know, dents that we, that got put into the V S B A over the past year. I think with new leadership, and I think Sue's the perfect person to be leading the organization. I think Neil is also, you know, going to be excellent, trying to, trying to put the V S B A, and this is, you know, it's what, I've got a lot of respect for Don. And, you know, what Don said, you know, having the organization be viewed as, you know, the positive organization that it is, and its voice is extremely important. I think we've got a little bit of work, you know, with our membership and, you know, at the state level to do it. I think we've got the right resources in place to do that. And, you know, frankly, I'd just like to be a more significant part of helping make that happen.
Thank you to both of our candidates. Does everybody have their little ballot script? And then, will you collect them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ooh, I get two?
Uh, no, you have one. And do we have a reasonable method of getting the votes off of the phone?
Oh, we hadn't thought about that.
Kevin and...
They could email them.
Kevin, yeah, do you have access to email right now, Kevin? Okay, so if you wouldn't mind emailing your vote to Sue Saglowski? And Christina, are you still with us?
I am, yeah, I'm back again, yeah.
Okay, and do you have access to email?
Yep, I can get on email.
Sue Saglowski, please.
Did Judy go away?
Yes.
Judy did, she is...
She went into Canada. She's lost self-oversession.
I'm looking at the offering plate.
But our two candidates are Jim Salzgier and Don Collins. Those are your two choices for voting.
All right, I'm going to go out in the hall and count them. I don't have any emails yet, so, while I'm counting.
Do you need help?
Sure.
David, I just passed one.
Okay.
I was trying to smell it.
Okay.
I look at your votes. Go back to that, I made a voting game.
No, so the good news was that we did, this year at the annual meeting, we actually had three participants online and spoke with, and it went swimmingly.
Fun, yeah, no problem, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it went really well.
Good, good.
They were able to keep up and participate and...
There was only, we could only go up from the previous year's experience. We chose a less complicating technology, and then just ran the meeting, and so I think that was a very positive result.
We do have some time to spend on...
Yeah, go ahead, Christina.
My email will not send, is there some alternative means that I could...
Do you want to try a text message, or do you want to...
She can call the office, or she's on the phone.
What's that?
Yeah, well, she may have a cellphone or something.
Okay, Sue?
Yes.
Can Christina text you her results? She's having issue with email.
Yes.
And so we just need a phone number.
I got to go get my phone, this is my... That would help.
Yeah, 802-275-8666.
Was a clever way for me to get the personal phone of the...
Now, it's on the television, so...
As executive director, everybody's going to have that number, so I don't, I don't think there's any worry there.
I was going to say, Neil, the only thing we need to work on for the annual meeting is what a motion looks like relative to a resolution.
Yes, we already had that discussion.
And that is going to be one of the things that we will work on. We will work on simplifying that process for the next annual meeting, that is one of my goals.
You never want to sit without a gift.
So I know Kevin emailed you, and then I believe we're just waiting for a text from Christina.
It says it went.
Okay. Second, let me make sure I got this right.
Yep. And I believe it was received, Christina.
All right, it's nine for Don and eight for Jim.
Wow, that's close.
Practically tied.
So with that as a majority, then of the voting, a total of, everyone voted?
How many people voted?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, well, I just want to make sure that we have seventeen, because it needs to be a majority.
I would say that, right.
If it's not a majority, then we have to do it over again until we get a majority.
Seventeen.
Because two people on...
Fifteen here, plus two.
Okay, all right.
Thank you both.
Jim, I want to nominate you, because I think your term on the board at large expires.
Wait a minute, I've got one from Laura Childers, hold on.
Oh, you can't say that.
I'm sorry, I didn't know she was on the phone even.
Sort of makes it less than anonymous. I don't know that it's necessary to be anonymous, but it isn't.
Laura, are you on the phone?
But it isn't nice to have...
She didn't send me anything, so. Oh, wait, yeah, I've got it, it doesn't change anything.
It doesn't change the result, okay. So, that is Don Collins, congratulations, Don, on vice president.
Thank you. As I started to say, that it would not have been settled. I think Jim was appointed or elected in June to board, and it said his term was through June, uh, to November, if you read the minutes.
The minutes from...
The June meeting.
The June meeting.
Elected to the executive committee.
Executive committee, correct.
As a member at large.
At the annual meeting, not at a regular meeting, but at the annual meeting. You were nominated to fill out the position that Lewis, I believe, had.
Right.
And, which would mean that in November, which is tonight, he should be reelected, or somebody should be reelected.
Members at large.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Yep, although I'm going to, if you want to, I was going to move on, I got to go in order, so I was going to treasurer next.
Okay, I'll take time out.
Awesome.
I would nominate Kim Gleason for treasurer.
Okay, we have Kim. Do we have any other...
Name and...
Jim Salzgier, Benner.
Thank you.
Do we have any other nominations for treasurer? On the phone, any nominations for treasurer?
Can't give that one away.
We're going to close nominations for treasurer, and I'm just going to do the old, everyone in support of Jim, say yay.
Congratulations.
I appreciate the opportunity to help transition us to a regular fiscal year, so we have been waiting on this one, and I'm grateful to be able to serve through that one, and then I can't wait for somebody else to do it. But thank you, Jim.
All right, and then, we have openings for two at-large members, and I'm wondering if the best way to handle is just to do one at a time?
Sure.
Okay. So for the first member at-large position, I will take a nomination.
Don Collins from Franklin Region.
Oh, yeah. College Franklin Region.
Thank you.
Nice. Any other nominations for the at-large member position number one? On the phone, any nominations for the at-large member position number one? Seeing no more nominations. Everybody in favor of Jim, say yay.
Bill O'Tech Roberts rules on, huh?
I don't believe, I don't believe that a ballot is required, if they only have one nominee and they're willing to serve.
And yay worked.
And I just thought it was, it was okay. And now, we have one more member at-large slot, so we will take nominations for that one. Oops, sorry.
Amy Mullin from Windsor, I nominate Adrian.
All right, are there any other nominations for our at-large member position number two? On the phone, any other nominations for our member at-large position number two? Seeing none. Seeing none.
And I haven't turned it down, Tom.
You haven't turned it down. So quickly, all those in favor of Attorney? Just squeaked it in.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, so, thank you, folks. You now have your Executive Committee for the V S B A for the next year. I want to thank everyone who was willing to throw their hat in the ring and all those who were elected. It's great. Moving on then to consent agenda. In the packet, you will see minutes from both the September and October board meetings. Any modifications or changes to those minutes? Seeing none, then I will look for a motion.
Motion to accept the consent agenda and Chipmunk Green Dial.
Is there a second?
Second, Dan, because you're winning.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. Consent agenda is approved. New business, is there anything that any board member would like to see on a future agenda for this group?
Neil, how will we handle the, the way the health insurance comes out? What will we, I mean, next meeting we have, we might know something.
The report comes out December 15th.
Yeah.
I mean, it might come out early, but probably not.
Yeah, so there's a good chance that we, is that
There's a lot of nuances around it. I mean, we heard Sue describing it in a couple of different ways, we've heard about appeals. An information session around that would be really helpful, I think, for the board members. We have Patrick Healy on our board, so we can, we can do that, but I think it's huge, so.
We may be able to have Elizabeth, ask Elizabeth if she could come. Yeah, she's the chair of that.
Yeah, Elizabeth is the chair of the Act 11 Commission, at least for the school board side of the negotiations.
We're just starting negotiations on another cycle.
And we'll have a webinar.
So, yeah, I mean, and honestly, that is the purpose of the contract that we just talked about and gave Sue approval to sign, is that, you know, their firm now will be in charge of developing the educational materials related to, so once a decision is out there, so if it's the arbitrator's decision and they say, here it is, this is what everybody's getting, then those folks will engage in determining, I think, some of the educational materials that boards will be asking for, to be like, what do I do now? What is, what impact does this have on me? What does it mean for my negotiations? What are the healthcare options now that are available to us? What are the recommendations on how we might proceed through negotiations locally? That sort of stuff, so we know, we know it's going to be desired and wanted, and that is the purpose, is our agreement with, with the firm.
Yeah.
But as much as we can have information on timelines and some of that other information that isn't quite as general, it's helpful for our constituents and taking back to our superintendents and
Yep.
And even so, I felt that the teachers, we already met once, they knew more than we did, that what they're getting for their updates was more thorough than what we were getting, and as a
Also wasn't always correct.
Yeah.
True.
Very true.
Just saying.
But even our business manager commented that it felt like they knew a lot more than we did, so
It wasn't true.
Well, it made us feel like we were at a disadvantage, so.
I would also argue that it's possible that they might be sharing stuff with their membership that they shouldn't be sharing at this point in time.
Were they going to release information on the two proposals prior to the one being picked?
I don't believe so. I'm not absolutely positive.
I thought I heard around the first.
Yeah, I remember hearing something similar to that too, but then I know, I talked with Elizabeth last week and I asked her that question, and she was uncertain as to whether or not that was true, so I will follow up with Elizabeth and find out whether or not we know if those, if those two proposals will be released prior to
Even that would be good to know ahead of time.
Yeah, no, I agree, at least you would know what the two extremes are going to, what the possibilities are.
So it's bad news and bad news.
And to your, to your point, to your point, Tara? I'll say that we had teachers call our office and say, we were told by the N E A that we don't, we won't get any insurance, won't have any insurance at all. So it's not necessarily true what they're
So if there are no other items that you would like to see in the future agenda items, I am more than happy to release everyone, and I want this noted in the record.
I got a text from Lori Childers saying she's on the phone, but she can't unmute, so
Okay.
I asked her if there was any things that she wanted me to convey.
So I'm sorry that we can't hear you, Lori. Uh, Don?
I think I heard Sue say, maybe by the next meeting, we would have the person who's going to fill the vacant position.
Possibly, or at least we may know who they are. I'm not sure if they'll be here by then, but
Why I say that is, last weekend, I just happened to be talking with some legislators in my area, and they've already had at least one caucus, maybe more, in the House and Senate to start framing their priorities. And so as soon as we can get this person, it would be good to at least introduce them to people in key positions before the session starts.
Yeah.
So I don't think it has to be on the agenda, maybe it has to be on your agenda as President, but we can see if that happens.
Yeah, no, we know it's a position, I think, that we want to make sure that we fill soon. All right. Like I said, I want it to be noted that my very first meeting as Chair Go ahead, you got time.
Twelve or thirteen minutes.
You got time.
Colleen McKinnon, Chipmunk Green Dial. When is the original first date of our service, if we're new?
The day, the board meeting. It's not the day after the
So I will say, in reviewing the bylaws, I think that there is some language clarification that can happen there, because in one section, I believe it states that it is the, right at the end of the annual meeting? And in another section, it says, I think, November 1st.
So go for November 1st.
So in, yeah, in either scenario, you certainly are, you're, you're all on now. If you're looking to delay it, if that was your question, you know.
No, I mean, just for some, it's important to have, you know, a real date.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I have a question.
No, go ahead.
I'm up for reelection. The first of the year. What happens if I don't get reelected to the school board?
I believe under the bylaws, you would be able to serve until
I think
Region.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or until the regional leaders.
Until the regional leaders, until the regional, which is in the fall.
I don't anticipate not being reelected, I just want to
There's not a long line of people wanting to take her.
Definitely not.
If they don't reelect you, you can do a lot of damage.
But you might have a lot of friends around the table now that would be willing to help in your reelection campaign.
Go funding.
So Colleen, are you okay with your
I'm just curious.
I think we could just say November 1st.
I mean, I can make it up. November 1st, is that what we should say?
And Lori, who can't unmute herself, has asked me to convey that she wanted us to consider how to light a fire under the A O E to help us with declining enrollment.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so all of those items we will consider for future agendas, but if nobody has anything else tonight, then you are free to go. Thank you so much, board.
Thank you, Neil. Is there still